I just told it if you saw.
Okay.
You left me with that one.
Well, do we want to wait until after that to start it? No?
Can you hold it while we're...
Not sure. I don't know where it'll be pointed, but...
It doesn't matter then. That's a steady hand, man.
That's because it's resting on my leg.
There comes a goss. James Goss.
Which one is he? That guy standing in the green shirt?
All right, let's call the Lincoln City Council regular meeting to order, section eight, 2015. Mr. State Rip, you'll be taking the minutes when you call it over.
Mayor Kitchen.
Here. Here.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Councilmember Barnhart.
Here.
Councilmember Burden.
Here.
And I'm here, so they all respect me.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilman Pearson, if you'll leave us an invitation.
Father and children, before we ever come, we come each way that we know how. We just come about here to know the law. Father, thank you for our help. And there you go. But thank you, Councilmember Mayor and President of this town has a full call. And thank God for a lot of us to be here, we're all seeking. And then, God, I pray for God that you look upon everyone that's here. For God, those that misunderstood, those that don't understand, as far as God, that you prick their mind. Open their minds so they can understand. Then, God, as you continue, hold this mayor and councilman on your hand. Continue leading the God. Then, God, we're about to take part in the business that are set aside for us. As far as God, that you open our minds, so we can do what's said, the best thing that is pleasing for our people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen!
Ladies and gentlemen, to the right, I am the United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I hope everybody had a nice Saturday. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes of August 25th, 2015. Floor is open for a motion. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve a minutes of August 25th, 2015. Yes. All right. Any changes, releases, or additions? All those in favor, say that I would say no. All opposed?
Mayor, just now I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to place communication from the audience before ordinance is resolved.
I say no. All right. There's been a motion and a proper second to move the communication to the audience to... Before ordinance and resolutions, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say that I would say no.
No.
All opposed? All right. So the first item on the agenda is Wendell Stewart to talk about PJ expansion. Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You know, I looked up the word "respect" in the Western dictionary. It's a feeling of admiring something, someone that is good, valuable, or important, serious, and should be treated in an appropriate way. As I've mentioned before, a senior citizen learns a few things along the way. One of the things they learn is that respect flows up, down, and side to side. The next thing they learn, respect should begin at the top. When it does, guess what? Respect begins to flow. Up, down, and all around. Together, miracles can happen. Over the years, I've been blessed to follow leaders almost to hell and back. People have followed me almost to hell and back. But here's the difference. We knew what the mission was. We knew where it was. Leadership answered our questions and our concerns. And we knew it was coming back. We trusted leadership because they answered. While we continue to wish you well, we must all respectfully admit, this administration did none of that. Instead, you invaded our sacred homes. And you did so clandestinely. We have a right and a duty to protect our homes. Sad to say, you have created this situation. I don't know of anyone that would accept this kind of thing. It's your responsibility to fix it. Is it too much to ask you to respect us, listen to us, and be open to our concerns?
Thank you for your comments.
They give on the answer later.
No, sir, that's been answered many times. There you go. Next, please call for applause.
Why?
Next, that person on agenda is Mary Bomby. Discussing water leaks.
Please hold her applause and say why.
Hello, some water, can y'all see?
What's your...
Good afternoon, everybody. First off, I'm here to address the road conditions in the old cars and also the water leaks. As we feel the road is so weak over there, that it is causing the water leaks to traffic when it runs over the road. It gives into the water pipes and is buzzing. Why does it take so long? And why does it have to take so many calls to be called in to get some water fixed over there? That's one of my questions. The third, well, an explanation to that question is, I called in, and did you understand what I'm talking about? I called in a water leak four weeks in a row, once a week, me and several other neighbors. Three water leaks in the same spot was not addressed. I finally notified the kitchen, it was fixed the next day. It shouldn't have took all that to get three water leaks fixed over a month and a half, maybe? Water leak occurred again, it's been leaking over a month again, in the same area. It's been called in several times by some of the other residents, still not addressed. The pictures that you see with the water running down the road were taken Wednesday morning. I got back Friday morning, water was fixed. The holes in the road is rapidly declining. We had maybe a year and a half, the first cold spell we had, not this last winter, but the winter before. The road started just bubbling up. I guess the cold temperatures broke the asphalt. Well, they come over, they put that black stuff, tar, and whatever it is in the hole. They don't even patch it down. Well, they don't run over it with the city trust, and we don't want to run over it with our cars either. Because it slams it back up on our cars. Well, then, so when that dries, we have a hole that turns into a mound. I myself, right now, I drive a Mustang GT, it is a sports car. I have $700 in repairs in the last three months. Entire sensor things and front end alignments, just that one car. I have five cars. All of my cars now have been front end alignments plugged in in the last six months. We need something done about this road. It's not only tearing up our cars, it's tearing up the water. The water's leaking down the road, that's causing the city money. And those are my questions, like, what do we need to do to get our roads fixed? And why does it take so long before... Thank you.
Ms. Bomby, I'll tell you, I have looked into that. The roads were never accepted for perpetual maintenance by the city. The city has patched those roads after some inquiry, going back and trying to find out from previous administrations, have patched those roads over the years. I have asked Danny to take a look at what it would cost to repave that road. Now, we're in the process of, this has nothing to do with county accounting, or a resolution that we're looking at down in those roads, because your roads were done differently, they weren't ever accepted by the county. It's maintained roads either. So, we are working on that, I'm trying to get some pricing on that to see where it is. But it was never marked as perpetual, roads for our perpetual maintenance to do that. It was done by the subdivision developer, and it was never built to city standards to be done. But since we've been patching those, it's come on understanding that we would accept those.
Well, I didn't interrupt you, but back in 2001, maybe 2002, Chris, you may remember, we had a big meeting at the old lunchroom with the Watsons, where we were annexing to the city limits, and that was part of the road process, too. Some of the ladies will look back into whatever that was.
I appreciate you telling me that, because I had not heard that.
It was maybe, I'm who knows, there may have been 2000, so I want to say it may have been 2001, maybe 2002. And we all signed the waiver to be annexed in. We all made it to the old lunchroom, and we all done that big process.
Okay. Let me check into that, because I did not find that when I did my request, the information I did, but thank you for that. If that's the case, then we'll get on that. There's some more pictures there. And thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Those parts were built and annexed in two times. The front, well, the south half of it the first time, and then the north half of it the second time.
You are correct, yes.
You're talking about, that was when the meeting was for annexing in the north half.
The half on Hatch's side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, basically from...
From Tricia's side over to mine.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Next on the agenda is James Goss.
Mr. Mayor, you have said time after time that you're not pulling back Lincoln's police jurisdiction. Even though thousands of county residents and practically everyone in the city of Lincoln is in opposition to your decision. It seems with this amount of resistance, Mr. Mayor, you agree to accept the contract. And pay attention to what the majority of people are expressing. There seems to be a piece missing in this police jurisdiction puzzle. That would explain why you and this council are bringing 120 square miles of turmoil to the city of Lincoln. Auto-tax revenue is indicative major part of this problem. You must be trying to appease somebody other than the citizens of Lincoln and thousands of county residents. Because what you're doing defines everyone's imagination. Mr. Mayor, you can continue to say you're not pulling back until you turn blue in the face. But Lincoln Police Jurisdiction will be pulled back. It may not be you and this council making that decision. But it will be pulled back. After the upcoming election, changes in this council, including the mayor, will permit common sense to return to this council chamber. So, yes, Lincoln Police Jurisdiction will be pulled back. This situation, Mr. Mayor, can have serious consequences for you and council members. Since total responsibility for creating this 120-square-mile jurisdiction, as your names attached, not citizens of Lincoln, may have no voice in this matter. By having county residents believe the city of Lincoln has the ability to protect their property and lives, this mayor and council may soon understand what getting your pants see-gloss actually means. Lincoln Police with two officers on day patrol and three on night patrol have more than enough to take care of with 21.4 square miles of city. And do not need 106 more square miles added to their load. Just so you, Mr. Mayor, and council members can fulfill your ambitions. Mr. Mayor, if you want to protect 120 square miles, then you and the council members need earn your pay and start the trouble. Thanks for your input, Mr. Mayor.
Next on the agenda is Jay Watson to speak on his own.
Mayor, Council. The comprehensive planning zoning ordinance, which I'm assuming y'all will vote on tonight. I find it curious that, like, when I sent in on the workshop, that the four cities that y'all built this, took two years to develop, were based on Auburn, the eighth largest city in the state, 54,000 people, Oak Bluffs, 29,000 people, Northport, 25,000 people, and Alexander City, 15,000 people. With our city, it's 65,000. Why were those cities picked to build our planning order by? It took two years and no tell how much money it spent to have somebody research this, where you probably could have just picked a phone up and called Pell City Mayor and said, "Send me y'all over here, scratch out Pell City and put Lincoln." And it would have been done. They're the same, they're a little bigger than we are. They gotta be more progressive, because they're sure getting a lot more stuff. You know, it's just beyond me of why you would want to go that far. And what scares me about that is, is now we've got these great big zoning orders that really, a lot of people don't understand, it has restrictions. And one of the restrictions would be historic downtown Lincoln. We want to keep it like it is. We want to, something goes in there and be built, we want it to resemble Old Town. But when you turn the curve there at what used to be R and B, we've got this gaudy pavilion tied together by cables and exits, and it don't look nothing like Old Town. So, it's gonna be up to somebody's interpretation, once y'all vote this in, as to whether you, how strict you are to the codes of it. I mean, I hope it's a piece of legislation that we can work with, and you can work with people with, instead of some strict, be so strict that you force people into abiding exactly the way it's worded. The other thing I found interesting at the workshop was that we're one of the only cities left that still goes by the 2006 building permit code. All that takes is about a month to get it passed. Why haven't we already progressed down that road? If we're gonna be so progressive with these zoning orders? Are we doing something wrong? The other question I have is, you've had several people want to be DNA-sated from the city, but y'all haven't discussed it. Why? The, also, in the last month, I've had several people come to me complaining about the garbage service.
You've reached your three minutes.
And they're not getting serviced. And I know we have a contract that y'all look into that and see what's wrong.
Thank you. Couple things. Pell City population is 13,006, so it's real close to the cities you're talking about. The other reasons why the cities were chosen is because they were late-front cities in Northport and Alexander City, and the Alabama Planning Institute, cities that have Pope Lica, and Auburn, two of the most progressive cities out there as far as their zoning ordinance being progressive and moving forward. Most of our reason for our zoning ordinance was subversive, was because it was repeated over and over and over, many parks and sections, not because it needed such great amendments. A lot of things are almost identical to the way they were, they just cleaned the language up and made it more usable. So, I know you were part of that. The contract was to last about a year and a half, it did take two years, we spent no more money. Then we did the original contract with Ms. Ennis in the 50th Collaborative Group. We did not spend any extra, go over on our contract, it was exactly what the original contract was. There's a comprehensive plan piece of that, but you participated in. There was a zoning ordinance piece that you could have participated in. And there was a subdivision regulations piece of that contract. All three of those were part of the charge that we gave to Ms. Ennis. So, I think that that's about the normal amount of time, and Ennis is going through the same thing. Talde is looking at doing theirs, Silicata is now looking at doing theirs. And I really think that Pell City is probably not far away from looking theirs, if they haven't looked at it in the last 10 years, because the state law requires them to look at it. It's time to explain it in 10 years.
All right. What I may add to this, Watson, it's nothing set in stone in this ordinance. And if it comes down to what we have to negotiate to make things right with our citizens, that's what this mayor council is for.
I want to make sure the secretary got Mr. Bill. How's that?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bill.
All right. Moving on to ordinance and resolutions. Ordinance 2015-11, adopt the new zoning ordinance and zoning map. That has been put out on the website. It's had its first reading. Now, the floor is open for a motion to approve the ordinance.
I want a motion to adopt ordinance 2015-11. Use only ordinance and zoning map.
I say... Okay. I recognize Ms. Burton. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say that I would say no. All opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2015-24, awards bid to double diamond construction in an amount of $74,000 to the wastewater treatment, aeration, basin repairs bid that was put out. I have given you the letter of recommendation from the New York Mills and Kaywoods, Russ Roberts, and I've given you the tabulation bid sheet for your reference. Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I want a motion to approve a resolution 2015-24, award a bid to double diamond construction for basin repairs.
I'll go in second.
All right. All right, any discussion? I haven't heard none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say that I would say no.
Go ahead.
All opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the Resolution 2015-25. It's to comply with ALON Code 1975, Section 1145-8C. To set October 13th, 2015, at 5:00 p.m. is the date and time of a public hearing to consider the adoption of certain international building codes in a book or pamphlet form as required by state law. Floor is open for a motion.
Mayor, I want a motion to adopt Resolution 2015-25, comply with ALON Code 1975, Section 14.5. That's a, to set October 13th, 2015, at 5:00 p.m. is the date and time of a public hearing to consider the adoption of certain international building codes.
What this resolution does is requires the council, it's a state code requirement that requires us to pass a resolution notifying the citizens that we are posting the various codes. And there's going to be this one for the National Building Code, and then there'll be a second one following this that will do the same thing with the National Fire Protection Association codes. So, it's just a resolution to start, and we'll have that public hearing on the 13th. That'll be published in three places throughout the city as required by ALON state law. We will have copies of the National Building Code, copies of the Fire Protection Code, excuse me, 2009, yes. And the Fire Protection Codes, we'll have those available for inspection at the city clerk's office. As we post those, and that'll be on the 13th date. So, that's the explanation of the matter. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say that I would say no.
Go ahead.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Floor is open for Resolution 2015-26. This one's on the fire protection.
Mayor, I want a motion to adopt Resolution 2015-26, comply with ALON Code 1975, Section 1145-8C, to set October 13th, 2015, at 5:00 p.m. is the date and time of a public hearing to consider the adoption of certain National Fire Protection Association codes. Book form on for handling.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say that I would say no.
Go ahead.
All opposed? All right. Next item of business is authorize the mayor to execute a mutual aid agreement with the Department of Army. This is a mutual aid agreement for protection and joint work with the Ennis Army Depot. We've had that mutual aid agreement in place in prior years, and this is further consolidated that we were still in a mutual aid agreement with the depot, with the Department of Army.
But that like, has the public safety? And what long is...
If they call us for, in need of our assistance, of our fire engines, our paramedics, then we agree to respond to assist them in need of that, at the depot.
They are going to vote to authorize the mayor to execute a mutual aid agreement with the Department of Army.
I say... Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say that I would say no.
Go ahead.
All opposed? All right. Next item of business is authorize the mayor to execute the Pell City Animal Facility Users Agreement with the city of Pell City. As many of you may have read in the paper, the Pell City, the city of Pell City has taken over the animal shelter there and will run that operation. And this is an integral metal agreement to, for it to be our shelter for our city. We've been in contract with the former folks, which will be the same facility since 2010, and very, very successful, and very low cost, the citizens somewhere between $2, and now I think it's closer to $3 per person for animals. We've delivered over 250 animals since January the 1st, to our shelter. They try to adopt them out when they can, but they are in euthanasia shelters as well. So, but it's worked very well, and we've tried very hard to take care of the citizens of the city. We only do animal control in the city limits.
I want a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the Pell City Animal Facility Users Agreement with the city of Pell City.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say that I would say no.
Go ahead.
All opposed? Motion passes. I have a report from the staff. I see several in the box, and all of you, anybody else have a oral report? Okay. The... The one thing I have... After the last Wednesday's opinion in the Daily Home, it basically called for the question about the discussion about police jurisdiction. Through our city attorney, Ryan, we requested of county attorney Barry Baum to have a meeting that would consist of himself, and certainly Jim Sizmore, County Commissioner Jackie Swinford, Representative, Kail Representative Angela Boozer, myself, our... myself, our city attorney, and June Burke, and possibly Billy Pearson. To get more than that gets us into a quarrel, and we can't do that without, without, um, calling a public meeting, to sit down and talk through, through this. I want to read for you a petition. It was given to me by Alea Chaplin. There's seven hundred and forty reportedly names in here. And this petition, please bear with me, but I'll do this in three minutes. Petition to exempt certain areas in Talley County from the city limits of Lincoln, Alabama, and from municipal planning district, uh, and police jurisdiction. To below sign property owners in Talley, Alabama, respectfully request exemption for the provisions of that of the Code of Alabama, section eleven, page two twenty. The city of Lincoln, Alabama, ordinance twenty fourteen dash seventeen, in the non-annexed areas of Talley County, south of Alabama Highway thirty-four, regarding the establishment of a municipal planning jurisdiction, planning district, and police jurisdiction. The city of Lincoln has established a municipal planning district and extended its police jurisdiction to allow a limit of five miles using the non-contiguous annexed areas of Lincoln Harbor, which lies south of Alabama thirty-four, and is fourteen miles from Lincoln City Hall. Using this non-contiguous annexed area to establish these limits includes properties that are more than eighteen miles from the city, uh, Lincoln City Hall. We believe that properties for this area's owners, the area, the folks south of thirty-four, have been impaired without reasonable expectation for prompt police and fire protection from the city of Lincoln. Also, no reasonable public notice was provided to these property owners either before or after the passage of ordinance twenty fourteen dash seventeen. Okay, I read this to you, because this is the petition that was requested given to this city council. This was also what was allowed, and House Bill, um, that was passed in this particular legislature, which allows the city to relinquish jurisdiction only from around non-contiguous annexations. If I read the opinion correctly, the day of home, that's what they asked a question of you members that are, are capable. Is if the city can relinquish that area around Lincoln Harbor, would that be enough? But this is your petition, there's seven hundred and forty people that signed this. Many of you sit in this room, that's your petition that you asked for.
Do you want me to respond?
Can I address the council?
We're both.
We're, we're, we're past the public body's part.
Let him, let him speak.
We're not.
Let him speak.
You're, you're refusing to let me address the council.
Sir, you, you have been several times without being recognized and spoken to.
Let him speak.
You asked a question, wasn't it?
I didn't ask a question.
You missed the end of the question.
End of the end.
I, I didn't ask a question, I made a statement. I, I, no, I said, the day of home said, would this be sufficient?
You're trying to throw the monkey on the county's back.
No, sir, we requested.
That's what you just said, you requested a meeting with the county, insinuating that the county has not responded.
The county, we, we were asked that of, of your attorney.
You did.
And your, and your attorney said that, uh, on September fourteenth, we can y'all go into executive session, and if you respond to us after that date, we won't wait that day.
Can I respond to Mr. Cale? Can I have my three minutes?
Yes.
No.
Yeah, no.
Yes.
Well, I'll put you up though.
We're representative, we're down. We, we've got a meeting scheduled, he's included in this meeting, so you were requested to be in that meeting. You, you can speak then, Mr. Allen.
That, that is not right.
Now, when I, I've been drawing my request, I could see that Miss must do.
Ken, man.
Uh, speak to them, no good, thank you.
All right. That being noted, the meeting is coming towards council, make a motion with your job. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
You're terrible, terrible. You're a pretty good camera person.
Two days before the first meeting, the mayor just had a meeting, that the county commission had not responded. Two days before the first county, uh, Cale meeting, Tony Hanks arrived, came into the mayor's office and asked him to sit down and talk with us, before that meeting started, before this type of way started, and we told him to do this. You can have all the tax money, we'll work a deal with the leasing, we'll work a deal with the ambulance service, we'll work a deal with every room in the city of Lincoln, that we can work out an agreement on, how to repaint it, maintain it, repair it, we'll work all that, all that will be worked out. All we ask of you is not to enforce your codes, your building restrictions, your ordinances in the people. That was the deal we laid out there. I said, Mayor, we can go to the Cale meeting and tell them that we have all sat down and worked out an agreement, and we can solve this problem right now. I was told, and Tony was told. Absolutely not, if it's on the books, Lincoln's gonna enforce it, and I will appreciate y'all coming up here and trying to strong arm us.
Thank you, guys.
Now, Jackie, that was hearing, and you and Tony saying that, nobody else was in the kitchen saying that. Well, Bud, both within the room, you and Tony, so, two against one, I'm not all.
You first class, Ms. Burke.
Mrs. Allen, no. By the way, now, that petition was, was presented to them after that official proposal was presented, that had, was far more detailed than that. That is a dog, that, that.
Your three minutes are up.
Three minutes, man, that's it. Yeah, once you get, it might get worked out. Were y'all in the meeting, were y'all in the meeting with Tony and Jackie?
Ms. Burke, you don't talk to me, I won't talk to you, bless your heart.